Welcome to another forum at the rozellcitizen.com. I'm here again with Rockwood Mohammed, myself Mark Milton. Just wanna get a, talk about a few things that are going on in Roselle.
Going or happening?
That will be happening, going, man, please. Tomorrow, we got Shawnee's. I had to say it. Shawnee's Caribbean cuisine is opening up, right, tomorrow, 27th, right?
Yes, it's time for hurricane.
Yeah. So, go make sure you get your Oxtabs before they float away. That's on the corner of Aldine and Amsterdam. That's a new business here in Roselle, so.
Own body, Roselle Donald Trump?
Yeah. So, come on out, you know, and make sure you stop by, get yourself some Caribbean cuisine. There's also a new, um, ice cream shop opened up on Second Avenue called Sub Zero.
Where they at?
Uh, where the, where the, where the cutters, the barber shop is.
Is it on Second Avenue?
It's on Second Avenue. And, uh.
It's good?
I went there. No, it's, it's good, it's good, it's good. It's called Sub Zero, it's on Second Avenue, I forgot exactly what, it's like 405. Oh, man, one little piece of ice cream, not gonna hurt you. Go there, nice guy, Chris, a gentleman named Chris Prin, who is the manager of the, of the ice cream shop. Really nice, met him, he's a very personable guy, my kids liked him, you know, so. The ice cream is good, they also make subs to your liking, so go stop by there and.
Support Roselle.
Support Roselle business, somebody has to. You know, they, they, they talk about some infamous Chamber of Commerce, um, and.
Yeah, you mean nonexistent Chamber of Commerce?
So, that, so that's happening, um, and, uh, also, um, a, a girl named, uh, Roselle, Roselle resident named Nidia Nix, very up and coming youth. She's actually going to be in the New Jersey, Miss New Jersey patch, I believe it's like $1,100, $1,200 by September 30th. So, um, really nice, she's actually gonna be, uh, one of our, uh, she's gonna be coming in, be one of our, joining the family here in the forum.
Yeah.
So.
Trying to put some youth in it.
Yeah, yeah, get a youth perspective.
We ain't young no more.
So, I, I, um, you know, hopefully everybody in Roselle will support her. We'll be telling you the, you know, the details, um, very soon, how you can give and support, give, uh, show her your support. And, uh, um, very nice girl and everything, so, um, hopefully, you know, she'll become the next Miss New Jersey or Teen New Jersey, something like that.
So, that's why she been absent?
She been doing her thing, you know, so anyway. So, um, we're talking about, um, we went to, first, I went to a rally, an anti-violent, uh, violence rally on Wednesday. It was put together very shortly, at a very short notice. One of the persons that put it together, it wa, it turned out to be very well, it went very well, uh, good crowd, positives, um, uh, speech, there were. The reason it was thrown together, because there had been a rash of shootings, not just here in Roselle, but in Linden and, and Elizabeth. And some of them are saying this like a rival gang, um, that is from a.
You know, I don't understand this whole mentality with these kids, man, shooting each other like this, bro. Especially these, these parents and.
Well, there you go.
They're some working parents, man, what is wrong with these kids, bro?
But, they put together this anti-rally, um, march, I believe it was a march, I got there when everybody met in the Bible Way Church parking lot. They had.
Where did it march from?
I believe it's from Elizabeth, I believe it was supposed to be from Elizabeth down, that's what I was told earlier, I don't, I didn't cover the march.
So, did Elizabeth participate?
I, yeah, there was people from there, from, from Elizabeth, there was people from Linden, um, we had, um, you know, it was, it was very positive. It was, I mean, it was a really job well done by Cynthia and her crew, gentleman named Ishmael, um.
But we found out that day, though, which I found a problem. I had, you know, I couldn't attend, I wish I could've attended, I was cooking for, uh, my sister's funeral, uh, yesterday, but, I mean, you know, one thing noticed then.
Yeah, but, I mean, you know, I, I, I was told, Ms., uh, Ms. Dangeroe gave me a call, which I re, I, I appreciate that, and, you know, let me know what was going on, so of course, you know, it was either gonna be one of us, or it's, I mean.
Yeah, but, but, but here's the thing, right, to, to me, there is, uh, I, I think, you know, and it, and I didn't think about this until I seen the planning board meeting, and seen their reaction, uh, after the vote, right? And I, for some reason, uh, I think that was the plan, not to have people attend that planning board meeting. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, you got, you, this is your opinion, go ahead.
You know, I gotta go with the conspiracy theory, and I'm usually not a conspiracy nut, uh, but, you know, it, it start, you know, it started putting together like for, that day, all of a sudden, it happens, uh, you know. Then this important planning board, this important meeting about the development in that same area, uh, you know what I'm saying? That same where they marched, the same place where they marched, is being discussed that, that evening at the planning board, and then it was giving people choices. Or rather, you was attending the march, or you was attending the planning board.
The, the march was the, the, the rally that took place in Parkland started around seven, 6:30. I'm not gonna go as far as saying that, I'm not, I ca, I gotta at least say, this was put together, because you couldn't even plan the shooting, that'd be like they planned the shootings. I'm gonna have to ride, see, I'm riding with Cynthia on this one, okay?
Well, I'm riding with on the march.
Yeah, yeah, and they did, listen, and it, no matter what, it was something, they put it together, um, I'm actually gonna, I hope to get her on the show, because she has an organization that she started. That's really, she's gonna be talking to some gang members and stuff like that, but I wanna get her, her perspective, I wanna.
I'm sorry, what is she offering the gang members, she gonna be able to talk to?
Uh, I mean, some chicken and wings, I don't know, man, you know Cynthia, she, but, no, she, you know, she, she's got a, she's gonna, she's taking initiative, so, I can't be mad at that.
I'm sorry, I, I think it's something, uh, so, you know, I love Cynthia to death, but I, you know, I don't, I don't think anybody, uh, do these things in a vacuum, and I just think there's some sense of, uh, uh, plan beyond this. And it's not wrong with it, because, you know, I think that's what you're supposed to do, by the way, so I'm not disagreeing with what she's saying, though, I do think, however, that folks should be given, um, um, a little bit more notice about the march happening. I think it was Brother Mohammed that actually informed me about the march, and he informed me when I seen him, uh, in the city of Newark, that, um, uh, the day before, actually.
Day before, right.
Uh, he told me that this was, um, it was, uh, actually taking place, so, uh, you know, so, you know, I just think that there needs to be a little bit more, um, thought, um, thought process behind it, I mean, these are good marches, but there should be a, um, thought process behind it. I don't think, I, I gotta be honest with you, I'm, I, I, you know, I'm really, uh, you know, I've been going to marches all my life, man, and I, you know, I'm just tired of them.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm not a march person, I'm not a march person.
I don't think that they, they, they solved the problem, I don't even think it brings attention to the problem.
But, but the issue isn't, it's always, it's always the issue now, the question is, what are you doing tomorrow, the next day, next day?
We never do.
You never do, well, that's it, once everybody dispersed.
Right, but see, that's the problem, we, we do feel good, um, we do feel good gatherings, where we get before, we talk about what the problem is, we never do know. I, you know, I did this piece on a blog one time, uh, that, uh, you know, 'cause a lot of my friends, uh, in the city of Newark, who were calling about things that was gonna cry, they wanna do marches, and, you know, I was telling them I wasn't attending, and they was, you know, trying to criticize me and do all that, and I did this piece, that said, uh, call me when we marching to the shooter's house. You know what I'm saying? Because, you know, the reality is, I done did the marching down the street to, you know, but we actually know who the shooters is. You know what I'm saying, the neighborhood know, let me tell you something, the neighborhood know who these guys out here doing it, but they silent. You know what I'm saying, we got this no snitch policy, you know, we can't, we can't turn around here, nobody, mind your business, you know, and I'm, unless we change that attitude in the community, I'm sorry, but marching just ain't gonna solve it. And the problem here is, because we got parents of these kids that's out there doing, selling these drugs, doing these robberies, who's actually benefiting from these kids actually conducting these crimes. Because they helping feed them, they turn around here driving their car, they putting their names in, they're putting their names on some of these automobiles, that these, so they aiding and abetting. So, the problem here is, unfortunately, unless we change the mentality of the parents, unless we actually gonna call out our neighbors who we know doing the shooting, I just believe we can march up and down the street and go in front of a church parking lot, and we talk, and they all good things to do. But I'm telling you, the reality is, that the next time somebody do a shooting in Roselle, we need to find out who it is, when, when the majority of the time, we know who it is, and we all need to go to that person's house, grab his behind, hop the house, and take him to the police station.
Well, well.
And that, that's the march I wanted to.
Right, and, and one of the things too, is that, we had, um, Chief Atlanta was there, Chief of Police, and one of his detectives, and, uh, he spoke, and, and, you know, gave his, his, you know, everybody should be aware of what's going on, and, you know, the same old thing that you always hear. The thing is, is that, I never see, now, a police presence, like, I don't, I don't know if they take it that seriously, and I assume they do, but, but, but this is the thing, but when is the last? Listen, if you can't get out, I've never, I have yet to see a cop get out of the car and walk, at least a block. All I see is cop, they ride up and down, they ride here in their car, how do you get to know the pulse of the, of the borough that you working in? If you just riding from Frank Street to Morris, up and turn, make a right or make a left, how you get to see what's going on?
But I gotta, I, you know, listen, the reality of the matter is, I don't, to, to be honest with you, I don't, to poli, most, most, most of the time when you see the police, they're responding to crime, you know what I'm saying? That it's not, you know, they, they're, you know, you, police is, aren't to deter the crime, because the reality of the matter is, they can't be there all the time.
True.
So, you know, the deal is that, we have to take control of our neighborhoods, and, so we can say, police, this is, this is the borough, this is a small town, both of these are one family homes.
But also, one of the things that deters a lot of people from turning anybody in, or saying anything, is their relationship with the police. If they had a very, a better relationship with the police, I think a lot of people would be more apt to say, say something.
Bro, no, the problem here is, there's no snitching policy, and the fact that, um, we, uh, you know, I'm sorry, hip hop has ruined, uh, these kids' minds, uh, and unfortunately.
And they brought that up too, they said BET.
Nah, man, it's, it's ruined these kids' mind, and the deal is that, you know, it, it has, uh, and we got the same mentality amongst parents, we got parents who feel that you should mind your bu, your business when it comes to their kids.
They wanna be friends, they wanna hang out with them.
But when I was a kid, everybody on my block was a snitch. Every parent on my, we ain't had nothing but snitches on the block, every parent on the block was a snitch, and why is that changing, this is Roselle, this is a small borough, why can't we have that some, uh, type of community? I, I tell you what, I, you know, I went to a, a youth house and spoke to the kids, and, uh, I was, and before I spoke to them, I told them, I said, I want y'all all to know, I'm the biggest snitch in the room. You know what I'm saying, I'm letting y'all know, and hopefully, when you get older, and you get a home, and you own property, and you have kids, you need to start thinking about snitching too. Because the reality is, you know, I'm saying, the truth of the matter is, we got, this is my property, I own this property, I'm not gonna let anybody come on my, I wish somebody would tell me, don't snitch on me. You know what I'm saying, you come and do any harm to my property, I'm reporting you, if you do harm to my neighbor's property, I'm reporting you, because what happens on this block affects me. And we have to get people to start understanding that, start turning these, um, these folks in that's dealing with these crimes, that's doing these shootings, uh, you know, who attended these rallies? I'm just curious, 'cause I didn't.
Well, thi, this is the thing though, too, thi, thi, this, this happened in the second ward. So, of cour, you know, Ms. Dangeroe was there, uh, Mr. Holly was there. And, that's it. When it comes.
So Cynthia, so Sylvia wasn't?
Sylvia, who.
But she was at the planning board, man, that's the point.
Listen, 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 when it's your ward, and you have, you had the victims' families there, you had, 'cause, 'cause Jamel was there, Jamel's on the planning board, and he was there, he might, he wasn't there for the entire thing, he spoke, and then he left. Now, there's no, listen, there, there was no excuse, Sylvia should've been there, she should've been there, she should at least said her piece, uh, to acknowledge her residents, and tell them that, listen, I'm doing this, you know, if you have any questions, come to me, and that's the problem. I mean, listen, uh, no matter, whatever else she had to do, this was the important piece, she needed to be there.
You have to prioritize your meetings.
It was, and if she was there for 10 minutes, then she was there for 10, but she should've been there, you know, and, and Garrett too. Garrett wasn't there either, you know, so they should've been there, they, you know, I mean, listen, whether you're the outgoing mayor or not, you still the mayor. Because you still have a life in this town, even, even if you don't, uh, uh, even if you don't have an office in Borough Hall.
And it just give people more ammunition to throw at you too, so.
And they did, and they threw it, they threw it.
I'm sure they did.
So, you know, it's, it's, you know, of course, they, they're gonna, and they're gonna continue, and you're gonna hear it again next year.
Of course you are, less than time coming up, of course you are.
So, but, ju, one of the, I encourage people to go to the rozellcitizen.com, go on the videos, um, we videotaped the, the rally, uh, there were very, uh, very positive things that were said, you should listen to them, um, and, uh, listen, you know, and reach out to those people, those, those activists, and those people who are concerned about what's going on, and reach out to them if you have any questions. So, a, after that, um, I forgot all about the planning board.
Yeah, me too, we was actually.
Yeah, we were here, yeah, exactly. And, um, we, we, you know, we didn't decide to go up, and the planning board meeting.
I'm actually glad we went.
We, it was.
Interesting.
Interesting, interesting, man, I'm telling you, man, it was, um, you know. Something to be seen, I wish we taped it so the public could see what went on, but, uh, they pretty much, um, to give you a quick overview of what happened, Mars Acquisition Group, um, the group that, their, um, gentleman named Ralph Salermo, he built the senior homes housing on Grant Street, um, and he's looking to build another senior homes, um, housing development, uh, in the, uh, second ward, uh, in the Bible Way, Bible Way Church, right across the street where the OEM building is, or Morris and Frank, and over there. Um, he went trying to get, um, uh, several waivers, so that he can then meet this deadline, where he, they have to apply for these tax credits, um, so that there would be more cash to, to build, and pretty much, the board, planning board said no. And that sparked a melee.
Did you see that heated discussion afterwards with Esposito?
Crazy.
And Esposito voted, yes.
Now, now, this is the thing, Anthony Esposito was appointed to the board that day, um, who knows why, you know, may, you know, perfect, good timing, or whatever it is, you know, you could call, say what you said, what you want, but he is now on the planning board. So, he threw me, 'cause when it came to the questions, he was throwing that project under the bus, under the, I mean, you, there was, I could've sworn I was, man, I, if you asked me to bet you that he was gonna vote, vote no, I would've bet you. So, everybody ended up voting no, except for, um, Mr. Holly, and by that time, it was already a done deal, the project was already gone.
Well, Anthony didn't vote no.
Right, but by the time it came to Anthony, it was already a done deal.
I got it, but he still voted.
But he voted yes for the project.
Right.
So, this is the thing too, I have to let everybody know, 'cause Ha, Jamel's threatened every, all, everybody on the board to say, hey, if you don't vote.
Which I think, which I think was really, really immature, I have to answer, I, I don't, I didn't understand, when Jamel said that, I was like, wow, I, I don't believe this cat actually made a statement that he's gonna report, like, so what, like, who you reporting, like?
Yeah, I mean, so you're gonna tell.
My daddy on me?
You're gonna to.
What's wrong with that?
You're gonna say, listen, if you don't vote yes for this project, I'm going to tell the community that you voted this project down.
Community that really don't want it.
Exactly, and this is the thing, I had, when I had, I had emailed Jamel regarding whether or not they were going to have, um, the community involvement in, in this project as they're doing the God Call, and they, they're telling me no, it doesn't, it's too, it's a small project, there's no need for it.
The problem with this project is, one, it was trying to be rushed through, uh, and, you know, folks seeing it for face value, that, um, this guy had too many, um, waivers that he was requesting, um, um, for this project, and, and here's the thing, because most, most projects, most time when you give people variance for projects, it's because of pre-existing conditions, right? But this guy was creating the conditions, and then asking for the waiver, so, most of the time, you see developers come for.
It was, that, that was weird, yeah.
Most of the time, you see a developer come for a bunch of variances, because there's an already structure there, that he's just trying to rehab, but because of the laws have changed, he has to ask for these variances, because he can't change the structure, right? But this guy was actually creating the circumstances, and then asking for the waivers from the circumstance that he was creating.
All right, but.
And I mean, you know, that doesn't make sense, instead of, like, 'cause Anthony had a point, instead of him working within a framework of what the borough code was, he actually worked outside of the framework.
Explain that real quick, I want people to understand that.
Understand what?
Understand that there were already specifications in place, already, that what you can build, how big, and everything else.
Right.
What happened was, that the builder didn't wanna stay within those specifications, and decided to do his own. He said, listen, instead of building a, for example, a two-story wall, right, it was, no, it started, I think, it was less than that, for, under specifications, but I'm not sure, I don't know what the exact.
I'm saying, the, uh, how many apartments can be on, um, per, per 100, um, 100 feet?
Yeah, something like that.
Right, that, right, so it went from, and then he changed that, and then it wasn't even 100, it was 80 feet, so he went from 42 to 84, and then, for 84 to over 100. It's like, what, what is this guy doing?
And now, and, and what he says, listen, what he's telling us, what he's saying in Roselle, and everybody who supported, if you supported this project, what you're saying is, forget what is already written in the master plan, forget what Roselle wants, this is what we want. We, we want this for Roselle, and, and that shouldn't happen, we shouldn't dick, have developers dictating what, uh, Roselle should look like, what they should have. And if you can't understand that, it's not a question of being against development, it's a, it's a, it's a question of being for good development.
And I, and I think that's what Jamel, Jamel's trying to give an impression that everybody's against, uh, you know, that anybody who's opposed to the pro, I'm a pro-development guy, so I'm actually, you know, I actually lean on the benefit, I usually give the developers the benefit of the doubt, and I probably would've voted yes if I was on that board, I'm, I'm, as a planning board, I was as a resident. But I gotta be honest with you, I, 'cause I generally give the developer the benefit of the doubt, because we do want developers coming to Borough, and we do want them to make a profit off their project, because we want more developers to, um, build, and we need the tax rateables, so it's not, what Jamel's saying is not wrong, but what Jamel can't do is, he can't allow for developers to lead him down the road, to change all the structured laws and ordinance, that they voted on at the council, and then a developer come to him and say, well, uh, you know, give him some pie out the sky excuse on why it is, he's violating, uh, the, the borough code, and then we just turn around and say, because we want development, we have to do that development, and I'm saying, that you can't do that, you have to tell these developers that, listen, you wanna develop a project, here's the borough code, you have to work within the borough code.
And the question is, where does it stop?
Right.
If we allow Mars to come in and build this 100 unit, or whatever it is, um, senior housing, then that should allow, you've already opened up the can of worms, 'cause if I'm a developer, I'm gonna say, listen, if he built this, or I wanna build this, and, and I don't care what they say, so you won't, once you open that door, it opens it up to everybody.
I agree, because if you let him build, like, you know, we can't allow for developers to determine what the footprint of Roselle, and it seemed like that's what this guy was doing, I'm gonna say it again, he created the, 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 the conditions that had for him to ask for waivers, he created that, he created that through the development of the project, these were not pre-existing conditions. These are conditions that he created, and then he turned around here and said, and now I need a waiver, no, why, why should the borough have to give you six waivers? This ain't one or two, this guy wanted six waivers for condition as a developer that he created, that goes outside the borough's code, on what he should be building on that land, and that's just wrong, and so I, I actually support the planning board, um, vote, and saying, hey, you know, they didn't want it, and if.
They, they, one of, just like they said, one of their things is that, these projects is just, just.
Oh, and you could tell on me, Jamel.
And it's not, these projects are gonna be here for who knows how many years, so you have to look at, not just what's happening now, what's gonna happen later down the road. I mean, that's the, I, that's the whole reason for the planning board, they have to plan, plan for these things, you know, so, you know, listen, they should've, my thing is, you should've brought it to the, you should've brought it to the community.
Yes.
You should've, and, and, and didn't have to be in Roselle, at least the second ward.
This project was rushed through.
It was rushed through, and you could see when he was up there, there was a lot of things they couldn't answer, they would say, well, we can always come back, and, you know, well, you, what do you mean, this is not, this is a building.
Right.
I mean, I don't, that's one of the biggest things, so, a lot of this was rushed through.
He was just telling them, oh, you got, uh, vote on the project, I wanna, I wanna work with the borough to alleviate these problems, but this is what I have before you, if you vote on this, I'm like, this, is this guy crazy, man, is he really asking people to just vote on whatever he presented?
We have to get away, I believe, we, we have to some, some, somehow, at some time, get away of trying to make money off the backs of the elderly and the poor.
What, what, bro, was it telling though, for the developer, to stand up there and say?
Why you gonna take my, you gonna take my thunder?
I know, I could've, yo, that like blew me away.
That was crazy, just tell them what he had said.
Developer said, that the reason why he is building senior housing, because there's a need, because the seniors are being taxed out of their homes in Roselle, brother, if that is not the most telling statement, I mean, I was like, why, are you kidding? And he's absolutely right.
He is right.
He's absolutely right.
I said, wow, look at, I mean, he is, so, you know, I mean, he needs to start, not just senior, I mean, listen, we, we sat, there was a couple that was sitting next to us, how much were they paying?
$14,000.
$14,000.
Yeah, nah, this is, this is, this is absurd, man.
Yeah, and, and, and this whole thing about bringing, oh, they were, this two, they were gonna pay $250,000 that would go into the borough, and all this other, trying to make it more, more enticing, listen, if you, if you do a senior home, that can only, that only, that you can only make $35,000 combined income, in order to get in here, and, and you're saying, putting this in here, and then having commercial is gonna bring, they can't afford.
Well, they didn't have commercial on this project, if they had commercial, I'd have been a bigger supporter.
No, they, that's supposedly your second.
Phase two, but see, I don't believe it's phase two part.
You know they're phase two, you know how that is.
That's the problem I have, it's 'cause I don't believe in the phase two part, I believe that he's experimenting in the area, and if the building doesn't do well, then he's gonna scrap them, he gonna back out, so.
Senior housing is definite money.
He's right, because he was trying to get credits, he was trying, this was all about, and they said he want, um, uh, he can't, can only make certain, but listen, ain't no developer in business to be developing something that he ain't making a profit off of, it was a reason why he wanted to rush this in, and put the application in.
Listen, he's not doing it for the benefit of Roselle, I mean, and then, you know, the, the stuff that he's got, he's building other homes here, and that same, listen, you're where the opportunity is, don't, I'm not mad at Mars, I'm not mad, Ralph Salermo's a businessman, it, that's what, he wants to make money, let's not forget that, just like, remember, Jamel, remember what you told us?
But you know, what give me is this, this notion how we should be thankful, you know what I'm saying, listen, if we, listen, if the elected officials in this town don't have a better way to, if they don't have a way to lure in investors and, um, uh, developers in this town, then they shouldn't be in office.
Right, but that's the thing.
You know, we should not, we should not be, we should not be thankful for any developer that come up in here with some old.
He should be thankful.
Fly off the, you're right, you know what I'm saying, fly-by-night project, put it before us and say, we have to do it, because folks ain't kicking down our door, we just accept it, I'm sorry, we already paying high taxes.
We're selling out Roselle, we're selling it out, and, and.
There should be a plan, first of all, where's the plan?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, we can't support, we gotta support a plan, we can't, we can't just support, there was a master plan that was just done.
Right.
With the planning board in the Borough, it was just completed, so how can you ju, I, I don't even think it's been a year that the master plan was completed.
It's been amended, I think, of 2000, last year.
It was just amended, so I'm, I'm, so I'm not understanding, how is it that we can't turn around and just pass a master plan, and say, this is what we want, or, in that area, and then we turn around, a lot of developers say, well, you know, forget what your, uh, master plan is, this is what I want in that area, and then we say, well, you know, because no one else is developing, no one's kicking down our door to invest money in the, well, guess what? If you can, if you don't have a plan, 'cause, 'cause I, I seen literature that said, I have a development plan, you know what I'm saying, that's, I, that's what the literature, I wish I had that literature, I seen literature that said that, so I'm saying, then let's enact, let's, uh, enact the development plan, because you should be en, en, enticing developers in them to come in here and invest in it, based on your development plan. But we don't have a development plan, we got a project plan.
A good point, because, uh, what are, are, are officials out there selling Roselle, are they out there luring people in here, or are they just waiting?
They don't have a plan, did you see how upset Ms. Dangeroe was?
Yeah, yeah.
And, I mean, she was like, I was like, wow, her and Cynthia was like, they went and argued with Esposito, obviously, we were to take, we should've taped that and posted it up on the internet, they was arguing with Esposito, and, you know what I'm saying, going.
Listen, the process, it went through the process.
He voted yes, and they still arguing with him.
I know, and they still got him, 'cause he was, 'cause he voted, I understand that one, but, uh, you know, and that's the thing, the process, it went through the process, just like they all say, the process, the process, the process is only good when it works in their favor.
Oh, man, I, yo.
That's when it's only good, and that goes on any side, it's only good.
The mo, the most funny part was when Dangeroe told the planning board guy, when you, uh, can't, I'm disappointed, and you, I'm looking at her, and I said to her, well, we disappointed in a lot of decisions you make too, I mean, why is it that we can respect your process? See, they was mad for the first time in a long time, they didn't get what they want, they lost the vote in this borough, because they not the majority on the planning board, but listen, residents, that planning board is gonna change come, um, Jan, uh, January, you can best believe, uh, that folks getting off, that, that's gonna be stripped, it'll be, uh, a whole different planning board.
But they got turned.
And we're gonna see all types of projects up in here after that, you know, because that's what y'all vote for, and, you know what I'm saying, this is what, this is what we get, so.
It's a scary thing, it kinda, it was a scary thing when, when Jamel. It's a scary thing, it kinda, it was a scary thing when, when Jamel attacked the other board members. And, and was saying that if you don't vote.
Yeah, the threat didn't make sense to me. I thought it was immature.
And when you look at that, I have to look at him thinking he's gonna be the man. He is gonna be the man. And is that the type of attitude that we need? Listen, the process, it went through the process, and that's something that him himself, um, Dangero and all of them have harped on, is the process. Now, the process went through, the, the thing was voted down, the waivers, the, let, and let's ex- let's, let's clear this out. The project still can go on. It could still can go on, just like Mar- Ralph Salermo had said, whether or not he gets these tax raises. He did say that they, he would keep on with this project. So, the project didn't get killed, the waivers got killed that he asked for. So now he's gotta go back to the drawing board. So let's see what happens now, is he gonna come forth with?
Dangero asked the attorneys, uh, was it illegal?
So with Dangero, we took, you know, with Dangero, um, you know, they had some, they should have brought the supporters. You know, Jamel said that there were only a few of them in there that was, that majority supported the project. There's only a few that didn't support the project, and they were there. But, like I said, they sh- he should have had them down there. And let them speak and say why this project is, is, is good for that, for their area. And that's one of the things, they decided not to. They decided to make that decision for themselves and think that's all we, all the community needed, was them to make the decision to say, Les, this is good. You listen to us, we're making a decision, and, and, and that's it.
You know, I, I hope, I'm telling you something, bro, I, you know, with Jamel coming in and the fact that they gonna have, you know, just a super majority on that council. They pretty much control the whole borough at this point. They have, you know what I'm saying? Cause they've had four votes on the council. But I, but I, I'm just hoping now. That there is somebody on that council that has some sense of cha- we just can't keep allowing. For projects like this to go through, uh, without, you know, just because we got the votes and just saying, you know what I'm saying, scrap what the community think, what people's, um, problem is. That has, you, you have to listen to what, you can't allow for developers to create a condition. That is not in the borough code, and then ask for a waiver in, with the condition that they created. When they build a project, they should do everything in their power to try to get as less, as, um, uh, variances as possible. And that's not what this developer did. He just said, I'm gonna build the building I wanna build, I'm gonna maximize the space on this building. As mu- much as I wanna, um, ma- um, build this building out, and it'll go through, because somebody told him that it was gonna be able to sell through. And I'm saying to you, you know, it didn't work out that way.
We, we need, we need Jamel on here to explain. What the master plan, what his vision of that.
Be upset about the fact that, you think he got it over the fact that the, the tape was, uh, the sound, voice?
Hopefully, hopefully, who knows, man, but, you know, I, listen.
What if he don't, okay, we gonna talk about it.
Look, I, look, Jamel, he, he's got.
I like Jamel.
It's not about that, it's not about that. This is when, when, and I'm gonna say arrogance comes into affecting this town. Where you think that whatever you say is good for everyone. And that's the problem, it's not good for everyone. So, you need to, and listen, if the project was good, then you should have brought forth those good, what, why is it good? Just getting a quarter of a million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, say here, uh, 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 here's two hundred fifty thousand, that's great for us, great for, that, well, explain why. Explain how is that gonna help, help our taxes? And what is, when will it start helping our taxes? When will this project end up? And, and listen, but, but, you know, so, and I wanna talk about, listen, he, he went, is this his? His, his start on stabilizing taxes at the platform he ran on?
This is not, yeah, folks, this is, nah, man, no project like that size. First of all, don't, you, you gonna, for our taxes in here to come. We need commercial development. That's the bottom line. This town has to be business oriented. As long as this town is a town that's really about residential. And, uh, we'll never turn around and stabilize the taxes down. This has to be where people spending money, this is destine's town. Because there's something in here that folks wanna come, um, purchase, uh, in, in our town. And as long as you don't have that. And it's just about residential building, I don't care what nobody say. It is, that is not, because all we doing now, all that project gonna do? Is give them two hundred and fifty more thousand dollars to give an attorney.
Well, that's it. That two hundred fifty's already spent. So, the building was supposed to bring forty thousand a year in taxes at a certain, in every year, so whatever. But listen, you know, here, but we're bringing in another. What is it? Hu- two hundred seniors, eh, two hundred, two hundred residents into the community, the parking.
What he said, no, he didn't, not bringing up two hundred seniors in the building. He's taking the seniors that was displaced because their taxes too high. And can't afford their homes, and they're gonna move in this building.
But this is the thing too. And then Ralph Salorma did say he had eighty, eighty people on the wait, he had people on the waiting list.
Because the seniors in Rozelle, who are on a fixed income, cannot afford the tax increases. Every year that this borough puts into effect. So, all these folks who try to make it seem like it's no big deal. Your taxes only going up twenty-five dollars a quarter, or thirty dollars a quarter, first of all, which is a, a lie, right? But even if it was, guess what? That twenty-five and thirty dollars per quarter. And we're putting our grandparents out of their home. And putting them into these freaking boxes, because one, we wanna control their vote, and, 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 and it's ridiculous.
And the thing is too, it's not even, listen, it's the seniors, that's one thing, but now it's not even just the seniors. It's, listen, it's everybody in. I almost wish I was seventy years old.
At a point, there is a point where I can't afford the taxes on this house.
Listen, I could tell you right now. I didn't afford them three years ago. So, 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 what do you, I mean, where, where does it come, listen, they all, no one, I haven't seen it. And I, listen, that, this is one thing. Call us, email, come into the show. For anybody on this council who, who has the solution on stable, and I won't even get to lowering taxes. I'll get it to stabilizing taxes, okay? Because that's the platform they ran on.
I didn't see, I didn't hear any victory speeches.
So, and, and it goes for anybody who supported, but supported them, you who voted, uh, uh, voted for that. Come in and, and tell us what, how, what that plan is, because I haven't heard it yet. And that's the thing, so. And if, if there's a question of, we're waiting for the new administration, why?
They've already been in control of this borough.
We waiting on anything? I don't understand that. So, are you waiting to get into the new office? Is that, I mean, I don't understand this.
Well, I'm sorry, listen, Jamel had, they have already been in control of this borough. I mean, it's just, they just completing the transition, as far as I'm concerned, come January first. They've been in control of this borough for the last two years. Uh, and they've been running this town the way they run it. We've had more co- lawyers getting contracts. We done seen more people being hired as consultants and all these other little contracts, uh, we've seen going on in this borough. We've had all types of excuses about why we spending money, why we spending money, and the residents of this town not getting the bang for their buck. But we continuously wanna elect these people, we continuously wanna promote these people, and you get what you vote for. And that's just the bottom line. I mean, and if people want change, then they'll make change. If they don't want change, they like the way their taxes.
And please, please, if not now, stop. And, and this is one of my requests, and we gonna just, we gonna have to wrap it up soon. My request is, Garrett is no, he's not mayor anymore. He's out, he's out, he's out. And Adrian Mapp has been gone. Going back to them. Listen, okay, let's say this, they messed up. Let's, let's just say they messed up, okay? So what, so, okay, so what, what does that have to do with my taxes? No, okay, but what, but what does that have to do with my taxes being raised now?
But they got raised under Garrett, and it got raised under them.
Everything. So, uh, what does that mean? I don't understand. And the mayor, of course, has no voting power. So, what, so, even, and this will happen when, when Jamel becomes in office too. It's, he won't have any voting power, but ho- he, he will have, he'll still have his majority on the council. But this is what I'm tired, I'm tired of us keep bringing up these old names for, as a scapegoat, okay? Own up to what you got, own up to what you did, what you're doing, okay? Get it fixed, move this borough forward.
It's, it, no, what get me about it is, and it's funny, and then we get in there, because this is the funniest thing, right? You keep hearing, uh, folks, uh, saying, um, that they cleaning up the mess that was made from Garrett and them. Which is like the most ridiculous thing in the world. They're creating more messes. There are thirteen, I think it's thirteen or eleven. Additional recommendations from the auditor added to this year's audit. Thirteen or eleven added. This is, it used, uh, I think Dave said that it was, it used to be around, what he said, uh, uh, twelve, I mean, uh, twelve or thirteen. He, somebody said that they, they generally have, they added another eleven or thirteen recommendations. That they're saying the borough has to change to the audit. Now, that's under their control. That's under this current council control. So, when Garrett had it, it was, uh, eleven or twelve recommendations. And now, when they got it, there's eleven or twelve more added to the recommendations to change.
There's stuff on there that's ca- been carrying over and over. So, stop, you know, this, this is the problem with it, just stop it. Stop blaming others. Fix it. Get it fixed, get it done.
Or, or, or stop running.
Oh, yeah, or just stop running, you know, tell, tell the residents exactly what's going on. Stop, you know, I mean, listen, stop offering jobs. Uh, and, 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 you know, and say, here, you know, I'll get your job here, I'll get, I'll do this for you. That, you know, that's garbage. Residents, see what it is. If, if you have any questions, call your council person, ask them what's going on, if you, if you don't.
Hold them accountable, even if you like, listen, I like, I got, I like Jamel, I don't care. But I am gonna criticize them because they are elected officials.
That's right.
I, yo, y'all know how we feel about ease. But we, we gonna criticize them because they are elected officials. But that don't mean we hate them. That don't mean we don't wanna speak to them when we, uh, we see them in the street. That don't mean I won't call Jamel up. The bottom line is.
You won't see Jamel in the streets?
I've seen Jamel in the street places I go, because me and Jamel generally be at the same, on the spot, so. I see Jamel where I go. I'll see him at Rozelle, cause I don't hang out Rozelle no more than Jamel hang out Rozelle. I ain't, ain't nothing at Rozelle, what are you, where you gonna hang out? He right, I ain't mad at that man. He should go hang out somewhere, this is a big world. I, listen, I see him at events I go to, man, the political events and different events or whatever, I see Jamel going, Jamel be a lot of places, man. So, I'm, and I'm not mad at him for being, that's what you have to do when you don't like, for you gotta build relationships, so. That's actually a good thing that he do, so. I, listen, I wouldn't recommend that you spend all your time in Rozelle, because yes, what? You, you continuously do that, you gonna be in a situation. Like a lot of folks up in here that don't really wanna be in Rozelle.
All right, and, um, we, we good? We pretty much, uh, done?
Yeah, I'm good, you know, I buried my sister yesterday, so, uh.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, um, you know, send your prayers for, uh, Rock Sister, you know. She's gone, but she's not forgotten. You know, so, uh, you know, we, we'll just keep it moving, cause she would want that, so, um, again, and to the Mohammed family, you know. Uh, my sincere condolences, and I know a lot of people out there saying the same thing. So, uh, we will see you again. Um, also, we'll be shooting again from the library, we have a big library card, uh, sign-up push, uh, we're gonna be doing that.
That's another issue.
Yeah, so, uh, so, uh, we'll see you again, and, uh, see you soon.
Yep, bye.